Uh, solid.
Okay.
Oh.
You didn't get the memo.
That's why he wasn't allowed to come.
Can I start a minute before?
No, you can't.
Yeah, okay.
Those people predicting to be here, right?
That's right.
That's right. It's acceptable to be late, but not to be.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna wait for Apple time then.
Well, I guess the fish was good.
That's good.
I liked it.
It was more appropriately portioned.
Carrots anymore.
Not nearly as much food without carrots. I'll wait till my co-chair gets back. Right, as it's, oh, sorry, five thirty PM, I'll call the August fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three, Town of Breckenridge Planning Commission to order, Chris.
All right, Mr. Gerard.
Here.
Mr. Fractor.
Present.
Mr. Giller.
Here.
Mr. Lees. Ms. Proper.
Here.
Mr. Gara. Ms. Gort.
Here.
And commissioners, are there any changes to the minutes? No. Okay, saying none, the minutes from the August first, two thousand twenty-three Town of Breckenridge Planning Commission are approved. Chris, any changes to the agenda?
No changes to the agenda tonight.
Okay, as part of a certified local government, we're asked to take public comment on historical preservation issues in the community. With that, I'll open the meeting to any public comment. If you're attending the meeting by phone, press star nine on your phone, then star six to unmute yourself. Okay. Um, we have an empty consent calendar. Um, we have no public hearings. So we're going to move directly to work sessions. Um, first up is policy forty-eight A. Uh, defensible space update, and I'll hand it over to Cliff.
Hello, just one second as we. Alrighty. So hello, commissioners, good evening. For the record, my name is Cliff Crossplaner Two. Um, this evening, we'll be discussing some code amendment changes to policy forty-eight A, which is our defensible space policy. Um, a couple of weeks ago, I believe back in June, we had another work session kind of discussing the distinct differences between the downtown core and outside that downtown core. Um, some of the comments from the commissioners were to try to make our Town of Breckenridge policy align more with the firewise standards. Um, so we're coming back with some of those changes here today. Um, so we just wanted to kind of present those to you, see if you had any concerns, questions, or comments. Um, so if you look at the screen, um, you probably will remember this diagram, so the up, um, upper side is going to be the firewise standards. Um, and then the lower side is our current policy. Um, so as you can see, the, the biggest difference is going to be the zones. Um, our policy, um, does not recognize that immediate zone, the zero to five foot. Um, it then extends from zero to thirty, thirty to seventy-five, seventy-five, and beyond. Um, firewise standards is more zero to five, five to thirty, thirty to sixty, and then anything beyond sixty. Um, so, um, one of our biggest changes for this code amendment is going to be the creation of zone one. Um, that is going to basically, um, allow our policies to recognize that zero to five foot zone. Um, and we are creating that to align with firewise standards, both the measurements and the guidance. Um, so we will not allow, you know, the storage of firewood, looking at, um, some of the trees, um, that are going to be in these locations. Um, this is more or less creating that zone to keep it one hundred percent clear, it's just the structure. Um, the next big change is going to be just renaming zone one to zone two, um, and then removing one policy, um, or one statement of just materials under decks and eaves, that's now going to be covered by the first zone one. Um, the next big change is going to be in the new zone three. Um, we have decided to create, um, in the zone two from a ten-foot measurement up to the twelve-foot, um, just to provide a little bit more spacing within the crowns of these groupings. Um, but then in alliance with firewise standards a little bit more, and most properties in that thirty to seventy-foot zone, there are seventy-five-foot zone, um, will be able to achieve this. Um, the last changes to the zone, um, is just changing zone three to the new zone four. Um, the bigger aspect of this, um, is more or less what we talked about the last work session, um, is the creation or the distinction between, um, the downtown core and everything outside of that. Um, so the big aspect of this is going to be creating a new downtown core, um, map that will delineate the areas that, um, the zone one, two, three, and new policy four, or zone four, um, will not be applicable. Um, in the downtown core, so within the delineated map, um, staff will still look at these properly, um, individually, each property individually, um, accounting for, you know, any other physical features, road breaks, parking lots, um, et cetera, um, and then that will allow us to still prioritize defensible space, um, for that property while maintaining as much buffering as possible. Um, but I believe that is a good overview of all of the changes. Um, I'm definitely happy to yield any questions if we can show the map up here, sorry.
Uh, Mike, would you like to, uh, do you have any questions or comments?
Thank you, Chair, um, nice presentation, Cliff, um, certainly, this is evolving. What does this mean for all the historic cottonwoods in the historic or conservation area?
Yep, so all of, um, the areas are delineated within the character, uh, areas to have cottonwoods are still within, um, these, um, well, the downtown core zone, um, Rich Street, High Street, um, et cetera. So those will be still remain, um, staff will follow the guidance from the historic book or designed, wow, book of design standards.
Okay, that's good. Um, no further questions, and thank you, Chair.
Yeah, I think, I think to add further, we, we obviously understand kind of the balance between preserving the character of, of the town core where things are developed a little tighter, and we have nice vegetation that we really don't want to just be clear cut if we had to be beholden to the firewise standards that are really designed probably for, um, for development more outside of our, our urban setting, uh, primarily. So we're trying to balance that, we understand there probably is some need for some defensible space within the town core, but also we, we also, we also recognize that we need to preserve mature trees and landscaping. Um, because without it, would, it would detrimentally, um, affect the character of, uh, the town core.
Yeah, I, I agree, and, um, that's good.
Wayne?
I guess my question has to do with, you have, you show spacing, and maybe this is in here somewhere, but I can't find it. So it shows like, you know, ten feet or twelve feet or whatever between the trees, but the trees grow. And so are they gonna have to go and prune them as they encroach that distance, or is this the planting of the trunk? Um, yeah, so that's kind of my question.
So these policies would be specifically for the creation of defensible space. Um, it still guides landscaping plantings and such with, you know, understanding they will grow. Um, but a lot of these policies are implemented into existing properties. Um, so most of it is trimming trees, removing trees, et cetera. Um, these guidelines will still, um, you know, framework landscape plans of, we should, or well, they're required to have defensible space, but guide the plantings. Um, the spacing and such in, I guess what you're trying to get at, is more for trimming, pruning, maintenance of all of that landscaping.
Yes, my concern is, you know, a lot of lots are really long and narrow in this county, and then you wouldn't even be able to have a tree maybe next to your house, because it would grow into your house, so, sorry.
Yeah, so that definitely is the case for like the downtown core, um, and that's why it will not be utilizing the explicit framework of zone one, two, three, four. Um, it will still be reviewed by staff on an individual basis to account for, you know, um, fire breaks of like a corner lot for, by the roads. Um, even, you know, South Park Avenue that we discussed last time, um, that's a big fire break for the west side of downtown. Um, then you also have to think about the parking lots all along, um, South Park, those will act as fire breaks. So a lot of the downtown core is drastically different than the long and narrow lots of Highlands.
Okay, I guess I live on the golf course and our houses are all really close together, so that I think be really hard to have trees in our neighborhood, which is sad, because it's nice in the summer, it keeps it cooler. Uh, so anyway, I guess if we can just kind of think about how would those neighborhoods, they're not going to meet these requirements. Um.
Yeah, I, I think like, eh, for your, speaking to your neighborhood, which is probably some more similar to some of other cluster single-family developments where it's not on the large lot, but you have individual single-family homes and they're kind of clustered, then we usually, in terms of setbacks, uh, which isn't related to defensible space, we usually measure from the perimeter boundary. And I think for, um, properties such as that, where you already have houses that are close together and might have some landscaping, um, that's there, the, they have a buffer, we may want to look more at the perimeter of, uh, of those neighborhoods versus kind of at the interior lot lines, if that makes sense, because we have, we have other neighborhoods, whether it's, um, uh, Sawmill Creek Village, it's right over here, kind of at, at the base of Four O'Clock Run, and, um, uh, Breckenridge Mountain Village, it's on Front Street, is probably another similar configuration, as well as, um, uh, some of the lots in the shores development would also probably fit into that category, so, um, I think we're, we're trying to, you know, lean more towards firewise, particularly outside of the area where we can identify that almost everything is very tight. But I think even within that framework, where we can use some, some judgment, where maybe the structures are so close together, you know, anyway, that there really isn't any, you know, fire separation. Well, there's fire separation per the building code, but not as much as what you would see on, uh, larger, single-family lots kind of elsewhere in town.
So could we put something in the code that talks about that those could be reviewed individually and not hardlined into this?
I mean, there, there's other situations, um, like condominium buildings on Four O'Clock Road, where, you know, you have setbacks made from the property line that in some cases are as, as small as five feet, and you have to also use some judgment there, but when we are looking at like a map that we can clearly exempt, we, we saw kind of the character of what we drew out, and there may be some give or take if someone had some objection to it, but we've, we found that if we started kind of, um, taking into account for the kind of that next level, where it'd be cluster, single-family or condominiums that are kind of adjacent to the town core, then it gets, it gets a little bit more difficult to explicitly call out those zones, but we think there's enough flexibility within, um, the defensible space for, um, policy for judgment, where I, I think there's something that's workable for both creating defensible space as well as maintaining, um, you know, tree buffers on site.
I think we could, might be able to add a statement or two to that effect in situations like cluster development. We'd look at it a little differently, or have the ability to, just to give a little more teeth to, um, those situations.
Where there's common HOA property, whether it's a condominium or a cluster, single-family or town home development, maybe call that out.
Chris, you brought up, uh, Four O'Clock Road. I walked down there today, and a lot of those older condominiums that are on both sides of the road, that have been there for, you know, forty years or so, have very mature aspens, spruces, et cetera, that are probably two to three feet away from the buildings. And I would look at that in the same manner that you're looking at the downtown core, however, that's not in the downtown core. And I think it would be hideous if we would codify, um, a requirement that those owners need to cut all those trees down. It, it will decimate the look of, of Breckenridge. I think we need to look at what is the benefit versus the cost of doing that. And understand that these firewise standards are a national standard, and maybe they're a little bit more applicable to really hazardous areas such as California, and maybe we need to look at them as with a grain of salt here. Um, a lot of these things that are on there, I had Matt come up and look at my property, and he gave me an A plus, and I can't comply with, with zones two or three.
Well, I think also one thing that's important to point out is for existing development, this is uh, an absolute, it's voluntary is probably the key word, where, you know, if you have an existing property, you can opt into these standards. If you're developing something new, then we want you to adhere to it.
This is proposed to be codified for new development, new projects.
That's correct, and, you know, we had this discussion back in like two thousand eight, right when the pine beetle came through, and the town council actually codified it to apply to everything, and that backfired big time. And there was just a lot of, you know, understandably, um, you know, people in places like the Highlands and that, they were resisting that and said, no, I'm not going to get rid of all my trees here. And, uh, and so then we backtracked and we amended it, so it only is applying to new development.
I was, I was up at, uh, Grand Lakes, um, the year after they had their fire up there. And I was absolutely astounded by how much junk clutter and overgrowth they had next to all of the homes, all the buildings, everything else, and the difference between there and here is, is like night and day. So I think that those firewise standards would be very applicable to that kind of situation, and we need to kind of take a grain of salt with what we're trying to do here in Breckenridge, and understand that maybe there's some little flexibility here.
Yeah, and, eh, but Cliff routinely looks at the voluntary piece of this, where people come in and say, we want to go in and do it, and so this provides good guidelines for that as well.
Right, yeah.
So if it's voluntary, does that mean the police or, or the firefighters are going to pick the one who volunteered? I, I'm starting to hear that there's firefighters take priority of whose house they're going to try to save. And you say it's voluntary, but then is it really voluntary? Because if I don't do it, but my neighbor does, they're going to defend their house first, right? Um.
I've not heard that, but, yeah, I couldn't.
Oh.
I mean, I think, I think in a wildfire event, they're probably the prioritize whichever ones that, you know, uh, give them the greatest chance of success and ending the fire early to save the larger community would probably be uh, my assumption of how they, they operate. Um, so like if there's one that's in the center where there's flames around, or they can get to ones and try and control the perimeter, they're probably to take aim at eh, those and try and hold the line, I think is, is generally the order of operation in, in a firefighting event.
Okay. Have you, uh, had any consideration on like siding for homes? I know they can make, you know, it looks like wood, but it's a fireproof kind of cement product. I think it's really popular in Europe now.
I think that might have been discussed a little bit when we, um, redid our architectural compatibility material stuff late last year, I believe.
Yeah, it's been, it's been a
Cementitious siding.
A while, because yeah, like in addition to defensible space, building hardening is kind of the, the other component to the kind of having a firewise community and, and cementitious siding, Hardy board, and some other products that are not the brand name of Hardy, um, have been fairly widely used probably for the better part of twenty years here. Previous till about fifteen years ago, we gave negative points for those products, but over time, as I think people realize, became to accept them architecturally and realized that they mimic, um, a lot of the other building products quite well, we do, we do allow those without the assignment of negative points now, and, um.
Yeah, there's some composite materials though that we're still assigning negative points for. We had a good, healthy discussion here with planning commission maybe last year about that.
But there, but there are, uh, to the point of, um, cementitious being available without any negative points, that is a, a material that can use to harden your, your building envelope that is available without negative points, and then we just had the code update where we, uh, prohibited wood shake shingles. Um, so there, there are some things that are moving, I guess. We're, we're working in that direction in terms of building materials as well.
No further questions?
Well, thank you, Cliff, um, having been here, in building here for as long as I have, I've watched this whole, um, fire safe stuff evolve from, as I mentioned to you the other day, we used to save every single tree um, next to a house to, to where we're at today. Um, I only mention that as a, I think it's, it's a complex issue, you know, and, and, and where do you, where do you, where do you take trees and where do you not take trees into town core? And I, I want to point out, the town core, as, as I mentioned, there's a lot of fire breaks that streets themselves, and, and taking those into account. I won't get too far in there. Basically say, uh, thank you for this, I think, I think it's a, a good program. Um, and I don't really have any other questions. Thank you.
And Cliff, just, I think maybe as a further explanation of how this all gets triggered, uh, it's kind of like a, an existing non-compliant condition of a property. When the law changes, you don't have to go in and change it, and that's where they came back to. So it gets triggered by other actions, and one of those other actions that we're seeing, that I'm seeing, is a, somebody who's re-landscaping or doing something, building a deck or whatever outside. So re-landscaping is a class D minor permit required.
Yes, sir.
And when they come in to you and they say, um, you know, we want to do this or that landscaping, if they don't say we want to also meet the firewise standards, are you saying if we grant you this class D minor for your flower bed in front of your house, you have to now comply with firewise with this codification of the firewise standards?
No, so a lot of the times we are still using this framework to guide those permits. Um, so a lot of the times people are still coming in, we want ten aspen, ten spruce, ten this. Well, we will then use these, um, standards to then kind of guide that landscaping aspect, just understanding that they'll, you know, hold and then continue to grow over the next couple of years, so we don't want to create a problem from the very beginning. We'd rather go ahead and plant trees there where we know that they can kind of become mature, um, and not have to be preemptively removed. So it's not a requirement per se, but it is a framework that we're using to kind of guide landscaping proposals.
So in, in some areas though, when people do a, I'm going to call it, I guess, a redevelopment, a remodeling, and they get a permit, they then have to bring the things that are within the purview of that permit up to code, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, but the, I guess the, the simple answer is it's a class D minor application, you pointed out, where there's no class D minor application that requires other things to be brought up on the property. When we start going into higher classifications, um, driveways would be a great example, like if you have a class D major or above, then we'd require the, you know, the driveway to become in the compliance, not only with number of entrance, entrances, um, but also with grade and, and paving and, and such, but for, um, a class D minor, which is, um, it, it wouldn't even have to be necessarily landscaping, but anything that qualifies as a class D minor, we don't, we don't require anything else on the property to, to be brought up the code at that level, but.
And you're going down the path that I'm going down, so now we're at a class D major, a driveway. Is that going to trigger compliance with firewise?
Yeah, because a, a class D major would be a new single-family home. So, um, so that would require them to come in and, and.
But it's not, I mean, you can still have a class D major, can't you, without, uh, an existing property?
It's only a new, new single-family home. Class D major, I mean, you can look.
And like, and like Chris gave his example of building a whole new driveway, like a new entrance and everything, that'd be a class D major, wouldn't it?
No, I mean, if someone wanted to come in and improve their drive, it, it depends on the circumstance, but that'd probably be a class D minor if you're just redoing your driveway.
All right, so then I'll come back to Sarah. And if you're changing ten percent of your property, that's a class D major, right?
If you're adding more than ten percent to the square footage, yes.
Yeah, and so I, where I'm going with this is, where's the trigger? And if we're gonna have, see, we're already talking about things that I'm not sure where the trigger is, maybe we want to actually set out in here how it's triggered for existing properties.
Well, I think, I think the part where it's the classification and spells out what is triggered at the, the front of the development code that's, would spell that out. I mean, you can, you could get, uh, you know, a, a defensible space plan that's approved as a, as a class D permit, but then when you come in for other permits that are higher, whether you're doing a major remodel or, or new construction, that would be the, the general trigger, so for.
The answer is if it's class D major or higher, is that, it's going to get triggered.
Then, can we just say that? In, in this new codification, just a, a sentence that says this does not apply to existing properties, but application for a class D major permit would require, would require compliance. I mean, it just takes, it, it makes it transparent to people
Clarity is important.
That we're not going back and saying, all right, everybody, get your chainsaws out and let's get in compliance. We're saying you're okay unless and until, and where that line is. Because I'm thinking, when I first was going through this, well, maybe a class D minor for landscaping is going to require you to now meet this new, the whole nine yards of this new thing.
I think we could say it, and what we may want to do though, to Chris's point, is a reference back to the section of earlier in the code that spells this out in terms of.
Now, I was to look through, because there's a whole preamble to what we're modifying here in the code. We didn't put the entire section in there for things, things that we're not touching, and it, it may already spill that out as well.
I didn't, uh, like an example, there is a project that I'm currently, I guess, waiting for building submittal. Um, it was a D major. Um, I made them redo landscaping things probably three times so that they could meet these standards to like satisfy me, but I don't believe that they were required to do that. They could have just followed suit with their landscaping. Um, but like I mentioned earlier, it's a standard that, you know, we have required for other properties. I don't know if it is required, they'll check on that. Um, but it's something that I use as a framework to then guide my landscape plans and other aspects, because it's, you know, it's a good framework for defensible space, but also just good maintenance and spacing of landscaping.
And I really appreciate that, but what I'm, where I'm coming from is your answer there comes back to the fact that maybe not all class D majors do trigger compliance with this section, and it seems to me that we really need to just say when it happens. And, and that leads to, I, I'll compare that to another topic that I think's on our agenda is the dark sky lighting. You know, there's a sunset in there, there's a specific, here it is, you have to do this by this date or time, so. You know, there's a sunset in there. There's a specific, here it is, you have to do this by this date or time. So. I'm just saying, I'm sensing enough questions around the table here, even from the department. As to what the trigger point is, and I think we ought to nail it down.
That's where, like, it is a requirement of all new construction regardless of classification, but it goes back to the point that Mark made of. Like, the decision was made in two thousand eight to back off of it being required on everyone. So I think that's probably where it is. It's required for new construction and it's never been readressed since the. Whenever the last code change was.
So do I understand this is already codified in two thousand and eight and you guys are just not enforcing it? Is that what I'm hearing?
No. Um, this was codified, but this has been in our code for a while and.
Said back off. What does that mean?
That that's when we had, we're requiring it for everyone, that short period of time.
Every piece of property.
You're part of the code, that's not.
That that was only out there for four or five months. We repealed that and we said all new construction.
This is not a judgment.
We've been enforcing it ever since.
Okay.
But they're also going back to some of the discussion earlier where there is some flexibility. Now, I was looking for something else, but. I lost the section that was the quote, but it it does. Basically allow some discretion. It says the treat every property individually and and and. Allow some discretion in in applying it. Because I think it's, there is a little bit of art and science to the to the process where we obviously want to retain a lot of buffering, but we also. It be is well protected in the case of a wildfire as possible and and we're really, it's a hard balance, balance to strike. That was the quote that section is, so you guys, since there's a lot of. Statements in the beginning of the of policy forty eight A, we didn't include because we're not changing, but kind of. Shows the spirit of. What this is trying to accomplish and and how it's applied.
Well, I understand that I'm. You know, in my closing comments, I'm going to just be critical of the fact that there's not a a more specific triggering. Language in this, and it seems pretty subjective to me of even in our conversation in here, we can have. One position that says it is and one that says it isn't.
Well, I I think if you read through what's required for. A class D major application, a class C application, a class B and a class A, it's very clear that you need to have a defensible space plan. And just like you need to have certain other parts of the application to be able to be reviewed. So. I guess that maybe I didn't state that clearly, but that's, I can find that and and cite that where. Just as in in the other policies, we usually will have what's required that certain types of applications versus kind of being. Redundant and and putting them in for each policy within the code, just to kind of save space.
Okay. It should be said that this is still policy forty eight A voluntary defensible space. So maybe we might just want to. Create something that's required.
One thing I heard you say, Cliff, was that any new landscape application.
No, he didn't say that.
No. That that what he, what you were doing was to make sure the new plantings, new plantings met this. Met this this code or this this the 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 firewise. Not that you would have to go in and cut any other trees, but if you're planting trees, it should fall in within the guidelines. Is that what I heard you say?
Yes, that's how I treat it for applications that are coming in.
Just for.
Um, that are. Even remodels and such like that, they are not required to do this. Defensible space because once again, it's voluntary and it's only required for new construction. In this sense, I'm basically using this framework as the educational piece to then guide my decisions on yes, no, yes, no. I mean, obviously, this is a international standard that even red, white and blue uses and they. You know, discuss with me quite often of, you know, specific properties that are then coming in for landscaping because they've had a. Evaluation with that, like there's a lot of different aspects, but most of the time I'm using this framework to guide. Decisions made, landscaping, remodel, et cetera.
So to be, so to be clear, if I have a property, I I want to come in, I want to add to my landscaping. I'm going to submit that to you. You're going to come back and say. Because you've used the words yes and no, which to me is definitive. So if. If I come to this landscape, you're saying no, no, no to these trees because they don't fall, they don't. Fall within the sideways, but that's voluntary. I can say no, no, no back to you. I'm going to do it anyway. Is that what I heard you say?
Yes.
I had to clarify that the actual requirements for new construction are under policy twenty two landscaping.
Right.
It's not under the voluntary defensible space. And that's something Cliff, I'm not sure if we. As we move to council, we'll probably want to take a look at that section, make sure we've got the amendments in there as well.
Yeah, and I mean, compare that to the dark sky. All the new properties have to comply with dark sky right now. That's part of the rule. Just like they all have to comply with what this will be once it gets codified. But my concern is the the existing properties and the look back. And if if they tell Elaine that who wants to plant something or expand her property, you've got to now comply fully with this. Voluntary program.
Only if it's a class D major.
Yeah, but she's going to expand by ten percent. He's going, she's going to make a big, big addition to her house.
Not that big.
And she has to comply with it because it's a class D major, but then. Sarah would say yes and Cliff would say no, and Chris would say no, and I don't know where Mark actually falls on this, but. That, so I guess that that's my point. I I would like to see there more, be more. And and I don't really care. I I appreciate Cliff looking at these and I think he probably looks at them. Very carefully and does an excellent job because I think you care about this.
Well, I think like the section C five of policy forty eight A, this is. Kind of shows the level of discretion we have. It says each property that is subject. Of an application for voluntary creation of defensible space shall be reviewed individually. And the location of other physical characteristics of the property shall be considered. Without limiting the generality of the preceding provisions, the director shall consider the property's proximity, the roadway. Parking lot and other similar areas that create fuel breaks. Similarly, large tracts of open space and forest service land that may require a larger buffer shall be considered. So. You know, there's, there's a lot of other language that kind of spells out in addition at the beginning of the policy. That does give that discretion. We're trying to encourage people the to make. You know, kind of good, good selections in terms of. Which trees to keep for, you know, for value to themselves as well as the community, but also not. Have them keep hazardous trees that could detrimental detrimentally affect the community. But I mean, maybe we should have just put all the language in so you could, you know, read that in addition to. The part that we're trying to modify because I think that would kind of set the table of how this policy is. You know, the the goals and and how we. Administer the the property. And then I, while we continue the discussion, I'll try and find the section on like where. It talks about different types of applications and what's required that's upfront. That we every review when people have questions, but I mean, I think to the point of where you're saying yes, no, like if someone's coming in and they're. Getting a class D minor for landscaping involves planting new trees or they're trying to remove trees. Where they'll look at it through this, then they've kind of voluntarily entered into the realm of policy forty day. If they're just doing a flower bed that's adjacent to their parking area, that really. Because of how the code's set up, that really doesn't have anything to do with. Policy forty eight A, it's just kind of a small. You know, a minor addition is the wrong word, but enhancement to their property, it wouldn't be unlike doing a patio or a a small deck or a hot tub. That doesn't really have rise to the level of saying you have to, you know, complete defensible space.
I think what I was bringing up is. As I heard it, I can come in and say, I want to plant plant fifty new spruce trees around my house. And that will totally blow out the. The poli- the 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 defensible space, but I'm allowed to do that because it's not a class D. You see what I'm saying?
Well, you know, you'd still have to meet policy twenty two and I think we'd review it against the. Defensible space because you're planting trees and potentially would be detrimentally affecting that. It's it's similar, I guess it's like similar if you had a house that is over density. But you're just doing a driveway improvement or a deck, we're not to say you have to bring the house down. To reduce the density, but if someone wanted to scrape that house and was starting over, they'd say, yeah, you need to stick within your density limitation. You don't have. Right to.
I think you misunderstand me. I'm just saying. But an applicant, an applicant comes in for a landscaping plant. It's not a class D major. And they want to plant a whole lot of trees, a whole, just a ridiculous amount of trees. That's allowed because it's not, doesn't have to be reviewed under a class D major. So it can be, as Cliff said, we can, we can try to guide. Cliff can kind of guard that, but at the end of the day, that's allowed. So so.
Agree with that because you're actually doing something that is directly related to that policy. It's only if it was a class D and is not directly related to that policy that you could. Kind of keep what you have, but if you're doing even a class D that is directly related to the policy, that doesn't give you. Cart blanch to not follow it because. You're a lower classification.
Can I just jump in here?
Just that was adding to what Steve was saying because I it 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 is ambiguous.
So the one thing that I would like to add, just to like, keep this in mind. Usually I'm working with a botanist, an arborist, a landscaping professional. They're working with the property owners to make sure what comes to us is, you know, responsible is actually. Something that they would want to take on. You know, we're currently dealing with a few defensible space things that I'm reviewing with. The arborist or the landscape person and finding that happy medium between what the town would like to see. And what the property owner is willing to either pay for or remove. So there is definitely a huge balancing act and it. It's hard to meet every single aspect of this policy. For a lot of these just simple, I want to plant some trees. I want to, you know, create some defensive space in this area. All of these are. Very voluntary. So we do try to, you know, individually look at each property and kind of decide, you know. With the context and information that we have, what's best for this. I mean, a lot of the times the arborists are going to. Submit an application that we would approve or have very minimal revisions to.
I I think that the situation we run to more than someone that wants to plant a lot of trees too close is the person that. Sees this as an opportunity to maybe try and clear out for views or they have trees that are. That are plenty healthy or specimen trees that are. You know, in zones two or three away from the property and you're like, they look at it as an opportunity to. Just clear that section of their yard out and we have to point out that like, no, those are actually, those trees are okay because of the spacing and proximity to the building. And you should retain those and it doesn't meet the intent of it and you need to retain those because they do provide. Provide buffering for the property. And I would say that's that's probably the situation runs you more than the person that's trying to overplant.
Continue on, I want to see what other commissioners have to say, Mark.
I. Agree that there's some ambiguity here and I would like to see a little bit more clarity. To Steve's point, but other than that, I have no real comments.
Susan?
Um, I have a question about, I guess it's really the drafting. I take Steve's point, I I think maybe Mark's suggestion of cross referencing forty eight A in. Policy twenty two is a good idea. But I'm looking at the current forty eight A and then what's being. Amended here and there's a C and there's a C one and then there's an A and then it goes right into D. And there are provisions in the current code, two through five, one of them, five you were reading from. And I don't see them in the draft or any reference to what happened to those. And the way I would read this, those are being eliminated. I think there should at least be some reference if we intend to retain them and I assume we do. That there should be some indication that those remain as in the current code.
Yeah, I guess like in this case, maybe the the policy isn't quite as long, but we usually when we're doing code amendments, we just are are amending the section of the code that. Are calling out the section of the code that we're amending and leaving the other parts untouched and just for brevity, we usually don't include. You know, the the entire. Well, section.
Yeah, I mean, I was a drafter of regulations and legislation, so maybe that's why I'm focusing on this, but. All it has to be is a little paren saying paragraphs two through five remain. As in current code or something. Uh, just so that we don't get confused and think that, you know, this is all that it's going to be. I was just going to say, and I know we got to get to Mike too. Okay. I mean, I think we should probably regroup here as staff and. We can come back with both policies so you can kind of see it in its entirety. We'll go through those and make sure. That we hit on on the ambiguity pieces and come back. With your suggestions and I'll kind of clarify it before we move forward. And we can include the entire code.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think you have to, you know, totally repeat it, but just indicate, you know, what's.
I think it's probably with all the. Discussion here and just everybody seeking kind of different pieces of it. I think we'll probably do the entirety. And then we'll just like regular code language. When we actually adopt it, we do list a lot of it during drafting, so. We'll include all of it so you can see how it all ties together on policy twenty two and forty eight. So. We'll do that and just, you know, you'll see strike and underline and things like that.
I think it's significant that we have two attorneys on the panel. Both of them have a problem with this. So I think that it's important that we do exactly what you're proposing.
Yeah, it's, I don't think it's a problem. We can work on that.
But I think the comments that we've had so far is mostly to give the your department, give staff. The tools you need to make sure that this is implemented correctly and the purpose of this is to save homes and property and lives and such, you know. I actually think, you know, in light of what happened in Lahaina, it's actually, it's great that. We're doing this, we have this code and we actually are doing something about it, not just, you know, you know, enforcing it and such. I had a comment on Elaine, I was, I was having visions of Moses and the ten plagues and. If you don't have a firewise code, the police, the fire department is going to pass over your house and let it burn, but. But. Any case, yeah, I think one, and and if we get that ahead of time, we can all do it when we do our homework. You know, we'll, we'll have a better context on how you would use this. You know, my my thoughts are, and maybe this just doesn't happen. As Chris said, most of the issues are people wanting to take too many trees down. Yeah, I'm just thinking like someone up in Timber Trail, which. Are so, these huge homes are so close to each other, someone's going to want to plant, you know, a thousand trees in the. Ten feet of space between them and the the next ten million dollar home and that's and you're not going to have the. You know, they they can afford their own lawyers and you're not going to have the enforcement capability or the ability to to deny that application. So. Yeah, but maybe that never happens. So.
To Julie's point, we can bring back the entire code. I think what we were trying to do here is this was the section where we were trying to update and get in line. The administration regs were issues that quite honestly, we haven't had any issues with in the fifteen years that we've run it. So we just kind of thought those are on. Autopilot and it was just trying to clarify and and tie those two things together. So I don't think we were expecting a lot of comments in terms of how. think we were expecting a lot of comments in terms of how the, the other parts that were unrelated to merging the two.
All right. So shoot, are we good to end discussion on this work session item?
So for now, yeah.
Yeah, and we'll pick.
Thanks for the comments.
No, I did.
We'll regroup.
First, yeah. So, and he's not raising his hand. So I guess Mike is okay with. So we agreed that right up, we'll differ. Okay, good. So. Uh, next up, one second. Next up on the agenda is work session on hot tubs in front and side yards in the conservation district. I commend staff on coming back with this one so quick in two weeks. Never let it be said. Alan, uh, no, yeah, um, we just thought it'd be a good, since we had a relatively light agenda, it'd be good to come back. This point in the discussion, obviously we just had the issue last meeting on the PLOS edition and there was the hot tub in the side yard. Um, I just provided a little bit of background information here. Really? I just want to have an open dialogue with you guys in terms of your thoughts on this. Because overall staff thinks we have for the most part a handle on it, but we certainly, if there's things that the commission thinks could be tweaked in this, we, we'd like to consider those. You know, the design standards are very clear about keeping things like this out of the front yard. The most part, you want to avoid hardscape in the front yards in the historic district. Not so clear on the side yard. It doesn't really get into that level of detail there. Um, I think I talk in here about ideally, we would, you know, like to see it always in the rear yard, but you know, it's competing with other things like driveways, parking. It's not, it doesn't always happen, I, you know, in that ideal. And so sometimes we get these issues in the side yard. Um, so. You know, I also noted how many hot tubs had been done just in the last 20 years in historic districts, pretty surprising, over a hundred. I had no idea. Um, but Brad Rochelle ran, ran that number for us with GIS technology. So it was like, wow, there's a lot that's happened there. So to decide that, you know, oh, let's, let's ban hot tubs is probably not the way I would think this would go. But I think if there's some thoughtful tweaks we can make to how we allow the location right now, that's certainly something we can consider. I did note that when we have hot tubs at or at grade or sunken, when they're not actually risen up, I think it's eighteen inches or more, a deck eighteen inches or more requires a permit. At that point, we don't consider it a structure or part of a structure. And it can theoretically go right up to the property line. As I noted also, in practice, we try to keep some separation because we do have policy seven R and it talks about physical distance from the property. So we can actually invoke negative points in those cases. And so we're pretty successful at getting not only people to move it a little bit away from the property, but also in putting in screening, you know, landscaping to mitigate some of the, some of the visual impacts from that. And we do that, it's usually class D minor permit. We take it through and then it'll get, you know, the building permit and electrical permit for that as well. Um, and then finally the noise issue. You know, there's some things we can do to attenuate those noise impacts, but they can't be entirely attenuated and there are, there are decibel limits. That's something the police can enforce. But obviously we all have examples of neighbors that, you know, if you got a short-term rental next year like I do and they're out in the hot tub, they're making noise. Council did comment on this and they were glad that it was coming to, coming back. Um, because they agreed with your guys' comments and they were talking about, you know, we really need to locate in the least impactful location on site when possible. You know, they talked about screening and not being visible from the street. And then Eric talked a little bit about the noise issue. So anyway, that's, that's all I really had. And I just kind of wanted to open it up for discussion at this point or any questions. Well, it's a work session, so I don't know, we can go in order or if you have a comment.
I was one of the ones who welcomed bringing this issue back for a broader consideration. And I have to admit, you know, I, I was, I understood why, uh, the plus residence was going through, but I am concerned about having hot tubs so close to the street in the historic district particularly. And, uh, it's my understanding though, that while staff often will ask for some kind of buffering, uh, it's not a requirement at this point. And I'm wondering if it should be. It does seem to me, you know, I have seen hot tubs, you know, on like an upper deck kind of thing, which would allow it to be in the back. And, you know, whether that's a viable option, builders can build me that, but it, it does seem to me that in an area where the houses are so close together, having a hot tub. And, you know, I realize that there's a range of ways that people use the hot tubs. And some of them may be, you know, not to neighbors liking. Whether, you know, there isn't some kind of constraint that we can put on this.
Now we'll say that, um, we can assign negative points if someone wasn't going to landscape and screen this. So I think that's something we'd probably do.
I think we need to be careful what we ask for. Um, and, and I was a little surprised to see that hot tub on that particular application where it was. But somewhat relieved to know that it was, it's still in the side yard that they had planned to do some screening with landscaping. And if we don't allow the, the hot tubs in the side yard, people are going to want hot tubs. And they're going to ask their architect to work it out. So if they can't put it there, perhaps they're going to put it up and elevated. Anytime you take a function and you remove it, remove it from the ground, it gets louder as you go up. So got to be careful what we ask for because we may get a result that we don't like.
Is there technology out there that can measure the decibel and maybe have a light flicker? So people that are sitting there. Cause I mean, a lot of people are sitting outside and they're drinking and they don't realize they're getting louder and louder and louder. And they don't really want to be rude to the neighbors. Does anybody know of any technology like this? Common problem in this whole community that maybe we start to come up with the requirement that anybody who has a hot tub that's within X amount of feet of a neighbor or community. It would be really nice because I know, I actually know one of my neighbors that sold his place and is moving because he has two rentals right between him and he's tired of people partying all night long and him not being able to sleep. So be nice to have some.
Carry, you know, at altitude, it carries further.
Mike, do you have something?
Um, I don't, I do think that the two-two-four South Bridge hot tub in the side yard was so unfortunate. I'd love to see, um, the adjustment to the code that prohibits that from happening again.
I'm going to agree with Michael completely. I'd be pretty, pretty strict on this. I would say no hot tubs in the side yards. And then if there's a compelling reason, because the whole rear yard is taken up by the driveway or is steep or something, then they can come in and apply for a variance and it can go through the same process as other people who want to do something that we don't want to see. But I think in the, in the historic district, we want to completely discourage the side yard hot tub stuff. And as far as the noise issues, uh, in our development, we, we put a cap on it. Hot tub, no hot tub use after 10:00 PM, period. Statute, call the police. If somebody's out in their hot tub after 10, you can call the cops. They come shut it down. I mean, we just had to because the, the short-term renters do not pay attention to the cause and effect of their noise and fun.
So the cops will enforce your HOA commitments?
They, we call it an innocent noise violation because it always is.
Oh, okay.
But it gives us as an HOA, a bright line that we can notify that has to be posted at the short-term rental and a bright line. Now you've crossed the line, so we're going to call a noise violation and.
So.
I mean, I guess they, they actually have a violation though. They would have to, the police would have to witness it being above that.
Absolutely, they would, but we found that when the police come, the noise goes away.
We, we have other, we have other policies that use. So we have other policies that use the term least impactful. And that gives, um, staff a lot of leeway on how to enforce that. I think, you know, we do that. We've talked about that a lot with driveways, you know, that you need to, you know, put your, you know, have least, least impact on, um, the grounds or on the property. So is that, would that be a way to amend the code to say that a hot tub, you can have a hot tub, it needs to be in the least impactful location? Would that give you guys what you need to? Because, you know, these homes are, these are millions of dollars of renovations. So, or, or new construction or that they're doing. So they, they could, noise aside, they could build a deck over the garage in the back and put the hot tub up there. Um, and there are several of those in the conservation district.
I would almost say like, almost agreeing with Steve's probably comments from the previous work session. It is a lot easier where there's a clear direction. I mean, we have some policies such as the solar panel one where it has a whole checklist and honestly, that if, if someone, if the orientation is preferred to the south, you really get to criteria number five rather quickly under that. I think it's, it's a lot better to be clear with it versus least impactful or we'll have a bunch of call-ups on single families over hot tubs now that will spend forty-five minutes discussing each time one comes in.
Yeah, but I think we could, by being a little more specific, identify, kind of describe what that means. So we might still use those words. Yeah.
Ways we don't regulate currently in the development code, it's under a second or separate nuisance. But if you can have design criteria programmed into the code that would maybe make it so it's, I guess, separated more from people so that noise isn't maybe as much of an issue. I guess like in some neighborhood, like in some areas, it's always going to be an issue if people are outside at a certain time, but usually it's space buffering, other things that we, we encourage or, you know, regulate within the development code.
I mean, Mike, Mark, I understand your point, but that, you know, the conservation district is so densely built that no matter where the hot tub is on the property, it's going to be in the noise, if there's noise, it's going to be a nuisance.
Understand, the noise is going to increase as you go up.
Sure.
And also if it's on the ground level and there's some landscaping there, you don't have the spectacle. Yeah. Because once you get it on the second deck on the roof, you have the noise and you have the spectacle of whatever the people are doing in the hot tub.
Yeah.
And I have one of those in my neighborhood. So I speak from seeing that.
Noise or the spectacle?
Both.
Talking about adding more bushes and stuff around hot tubs while we're also trying to do fire mitigation.
Well, it's in the conservation district. So we've already, you know, we, we carved out that area in the.
Yeah, but we still need to protect those. I mean, those are really important houses there. To add more feel to that area. I think we should think about that.
Ethan, do you have any comments?
I do not.
Okay. So was that, are our comments helpful to you in terms?
Absolutely. I think we can work on something to bring back at a future meeting.
Okay.
I mean, this isn't like a life or death issue in terms of getting, get it on right away, but we'll, we'll bring it back for sure. Thank you.
Okay.
And I think as you did point out, that's the second plus side yard hot tub. Not to be unexpected.
Okay. So next on the agenda, other matters is the exterior lighting conformance website.
Thanks. Ellie's going to bring this up for me online. So the new, um, website is now, we just got a domain name today.
Cool.
And it's, um, brackdarksky.com. So we've got the exterior lighting policy. So this is our exterior lighting chapter of our development code. And fifteen years ago, when we wrote a bunch of that, this code, we put in a conformance date for those that were light fixtures that were already in existence prior to the code. So these would be non-conforming fixtures. And what we're doing with this is, so fifteen years ago, it was put in place that all non-conforming fixtures would be in conformance in year fifteen. That got delayed once, um, pre, just before COVID, I think, by the council, um, by two years. So it's really seventeen years. That, that timeframe was based on the IRS life of a fixture. So in theory, people had to replace their fixtures anyways by that time. So fifteen years later, fifteen years later is today. So in 2025, July 1st of 2025, they're going to have to replace all their fixtures. So a lot of HOAs are very aware of this and, um, because it is a big ticket item. And we recognize that. So we are trying to be proactive here and for those residents and HOAs that maybe don't know because people change and property management companies change and so on. We wanted to create some proactive approach to, um, getting people to comply and getting them financially ready and just logistically ready to, to replace their fixtures. So here's our dark sky website. And right now it's really just kind of education of why, why we're, why we do this. Updating your lights, you know, what we're going to be looking for, um, for conformance. And so if, this is kind of our code. So, um, we've got, if we keep going down, we've got examples that'll be helpful to people. And at the bottom, if we scroll down a little further, we've got our contact information as well. So we're going to start putting out this information on social media and probably on, on some billing, water billing, things like that that go out to property owners as well. And we have in the, we're hoping to get final approval in our budget for a intern for the summer, next summer. And that will work pretty solely on this project. So they'll be taking assessment of properties that are non-conforming and, and we'll be working with those property owners to educate them on conformance and give them some information and get them ready to conform the following year. So we just wanted to make you aware of this because it's going to be a decent push and kind of a big lift. So you might get some questions from folks as well on it. And then, so that's, that's the conformance for July 1st. And that's sort of what this is all about right now. Running on a separate track is, um, just wanted to let you know that we are pursuing, um, a community-wide dark sky certification from the International Dark Sky Association. There are a few Colorado communities that have it. Um, the governor is really trying to get more community. Um, there are a few Colorado communities that have it. Um, the governor is really trying to get more communities to be certified dark sky uh, communities and um, there's not a lot worldwide. And we'll be trying to go for that certification. We're doing a lot of legwork on that end right now. There's a lot of things we have to comply with that are like very above and beyond what you think of as dark skies, so it affects every, our private property luckily is pretty um, covered because of our conformance date already. Um, but like our town lights, if we have any left that are non-conformance, we, once we get, if we get certified, then we would have to come into conformance within five years of certification on all our town lights, which does affect our Wells Bach lights. And we are planning and budgeting to replace all of those. Um, Wells Bach lights are the ones in the Historic District. Um, you know, the big glowing ones. They do not comply obviously with dark sky. Um, they are also very difficult to maintain with Public Works. A lot of them are at the end of their life cycle. Um, so if we go to kind of what we see in the rest of town where it's sort of that same appearance in a way, but it's down, totally downcast and there's like that open center of the fixture as well. So that would be phased because it's a huge undertaking to do this. And again, that would be needing to be in conformance within five years. If we were to get um, certification with our seminal, it probably will take about a year once we submit. So we're planning to submit in, say, December. It might be December of twenty-four that we have certification, so five years out from that. We will be bringing here shortly um, some modifications to the existing lighting code that will affect new development on private property. And um, that will be coming to you, we're aiming for the last meeting of September. We need to have all of those lighting regulations approved at council um, through first and second reading as part of the application. So we have to show that all of our, our current codes are in compliance with the regulations are looking for, for certification. So that's what we're doing. That's a lot, but. Yeah.
Julie, where do uh, holiday lights fall in this spectrum?
So holiday lights are allowed. Um, and we will be looking at some potential modifications that might be a little energy savings. For example, our holiday lights at the town stay on um, overnight. So we might be doing some experiments in the meantime of just like, what does it look like if, how is it feasible to dim them? Maybe, or maybe have some timers on, in some areas. Well, we're kind of exploring that right now. Um, Public Works is looking into that with their lighting contractors. Um, and they're about to go out for an RFP on that here in like a couple of weeks. So um, we'll see what kind of response we get and what we might want to play with or not. Um, but again, we don't have to conform right now. Um, we already have regulations on our holiday lights, so private property, you know, there's certain timeframes that they're allowed. That's, I don't foresee that changing at all. And same with the commercial, so it's through ski season and, and if um, the Dark Sky Association does not, if they think that that's too long of a timeframe, we're asking, we'd be asking for a waiver and I've already talked to them about that, so they're already aware because that's a big concern of councils is that we are able to have our holiday lights up during um, the season we already do, so. They, seems like they think that that's very, that's quite reasonable, so I'm hopeful that won't be an issue.
Julia, what about motion sensors? So lights that just go on if somebody's uh, you know, going down the front of a house just to light their way, something like that?
Yeah, um, they're not required by the certification. But we think that that might be really good to put in place in things like parking lots, parking structures, things like that. You know, we do have some potential more big developments coming down the road, so we do need to think about that. Um, most places have, that are, get certified, a lot of them have a lumen limit per acre on commercial properties, so we are considering doing something like that, proposing something to that effect. Um, so commercial properties over a certain size because it, it does, it would get really difficult to do and some zero-lot line developments in the Historic District, so. Anyway, yeah, I think that's, I'll be taking some, something forward. We haven't finished writing it, so.
So uh, um, I'm just curious about um, string lights or bistro lights? Because uh, I know a lot of people have them, residents have them yours truly hanging on patios and backyards and such.
Well, they're not allowed per current code in residential areas.
They in our neighborhood.
And I don't foresee, I mean, they're not allowed right now. They're only allowed in the commercial areas um, and designated eating and drinking um, areas of a site plan. That's the only place they're allowed. They have to be downcast.
Yeah.
And I don't really foresee, I don't foresee us proposing to allow them in more places.
Okay.
Let's put it that way.
So I'll be taking my.
Julie, I'm.
At least what we propose.
This is a topic that I'm really passionate about. And I think the town could help sell it by building it into the sustainable BRAC and the the use of energy policies that we're trying to adopt. We've addressed this in our subdivision where we have part-time homeowners who have twelve to sixteen lights outside burning all night, every night, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. We've tried to address that. We've tried to find them into submission, but without a town code reason for making them turn their lights off at ten o'clock at night, put them on a timer, put them on a motion detector, those are all the required dark sky solutions to that. We're not getting anywhere with it. They don't care that their lights are on unnecessarily for all this period of time. And if I could make a suggestion, we think about when we're looking at the lighting code, shutting the lights off at ten or allowing one overnight light above an entry door or something, but the idea that we have to have sixteen lights on, across, the house across the street from me has sixteen lights on every night, all night, and it's just, it's not sustainable, it's not economical, it doesn't fit the dark sky mold. And I really think we need to go even further with this. That's my recommendation.
We'll look at that. Proposed wording that um, HOAs could put in their bylaws or whatever to kind of address that. I'm just thinking my HOA, they might want to look at like a proposal because, and supposed to dream up their own, right? Well, we'll have a, a lighting proposed code language to you guys in late September. Okay, and that'll be on that website that the HOA could adopt? Um, no, won't be on that website yet because we still have to go through the whole adoption and public hearing process on it. Um, but if it got approved, then yes, we would put a link to it on here. Um, and they could find it in our town code, of course. It's like an informal one that you all come up with to, for a starting place right away. Informal that you're looking for, I would suggest you go to the International Dark Sky website and look at their examples. Oh, they have examples? Okay, can you put a link to it from that site? Um, we could, yeah. That would be great.
I think it's just darksky.com, isn't it?
I don't remember. They might have changed it. They're in the process of changing their name.
Sounds right. I think it might be darksky.org.
Yeah, could be. It's easy to find and they do have all kinds.
Got yours from?
No.
No?
Got it before that, but.
Okay.
It has all kinds of resources.
Well, if you could maybe put it on your site that that's available for HOAs and then have a link. So I think a lot of, a lot of people are trying to figure out what to do and where to go, but it's a heavy lift for a few volunteers.
Darksky.org.
Thanks, Mark. Alright. Anything else? Okay, I just appreciate you guys knowing about it and if you hear about it, you know where to point people. Okay, thanks.
Mark, uh, town council update?
Thanks, Alan. Um, yeah, it was uh, not a super eventful council meeting. They got a, the council got a presentation from C-DOT on the Floyd Hill Project on I-70 and that thing is gonna be going on for next five years at least, three different phases. If you haven't seen the plans, it's pretty cool. I mean, they're basically cantilevering one of, one, you know, like eastbound above westbound or vice versa, like, like you have in Glenwood Canyon, kind of, and um, and adding lane in each direction. Um, it's gonna be a big project. They're saying they're not gonna be shutting down during the daytime except when they have to do like rock scaling and stuff like that.
Mark, where was this? I'm sorry.
Anyway, uh, but that, it was interesting to see and I'm sure they've got some um, information on their um, site on that. It's a seven-hundred-million-dollar project. It's a big deal. Anyway, so they, C-DOT's just getting out on this one and getting to all the communities that are affected one way or another by, you know, the traffic situation. So um, legislative review, we're making some minor amendments to the outdoor merchandise code. It's regarding allowing stand-up paddle boards to be displayed outside like we allow bikes. And uh, then there's just another couple tweaks, but really small stuff, really. BRAC Tourism Office, there is a lease, they're gonna move into the Professional Office Building from across the street, so they're gonna be moving in next door. Tom, Tom owns that building now, the Professional Office Building, they had some space free up. And other than that, um, there was discussion on the Riverwalk Center. Julia, um, do you wanna briefly talk about that or do you want me to just summarize it? Yeah, I mean, it's, ba- basically, um, you know, there, there's the idea of doing a Riverwalk overhaul. And based on a council retreat we had a few months ago, we thought we were gonna maybe take an approach of look at a few things that need improvement there. Like one of the ones that always comes up is having to walk outside the bathrooms. Could we do something that's, you know, internal bathrooms, you know? Some expansions of the lobby area, things that have been talked about before. Um, but the council basically at the, by the end of the meeting had said, we need to take a look, big picture at the Riverwalk. We need to know what we want to be. You know, and so the example is, do we, would we ever want to try to compete with Dillon Amphitheater? Um, or are we, you know, is our niche is smaller niche like it is right now? But to have those broader discussions first before we decide on changes to the facility itself, so um, so Julia is actually gonna be heavily involved with that over the next year. We'll bring a consultant team on to help us with kind of doing some community input engagement on that to, you know, make those decisions. And then after that, we'll, you know, decide how to move forward, you know, in terms of architecturally and design and all that, so.
Yep, that cover it?
Thanks. Yeah, we thought it might be more, but then when they said big picture, it's like, well, we got a lot more work to do now. So that's pretty much the summary of the meeting.
Expensive making our meeting longer. I have noticed many of the town electric bikes at the little motel on Tiger Road, so employees are riding the bikes out there. They're locking them to, to a post and then riding them back into town, I think, because I see them there overnight. So, I mean, I think it's good that they're doing that.
Yeah, it's not a station, right? So they're supposed, yeah, they're supposed to be getting charged. That, you know, they're, they're not being really heavy-handed about this yet in terms of the enforcement. So some people are getting away with things right now, but I think eventually um, the bottom line with the program has been hugely successful. Last year, I think, was Eagle Vale's first year implementing that program. They had seven thousand rides for the year. We had twelve thousand rides for the year already just a couple, a week ago.
Wow.
So I mean, we're gonna blow those numbers out of the water and um, you can see people around. Uh, we got a, Chris and I got an update at Green Team last week from Teddy, um, who's um, in charge of the program from the sustainability staff and there's um, the average ride, the average ride is one-point-seven miles and I think the average time is like sixteen minutes or something like that. So it's exa, it's hitting exactly the target. What we wanted is those short trips, you know, getting people from Wellington or Alta Verde into town, that type of thing, or just people around and it doesn't matter if it's tourists, that's great, you know? Um, but the majority of the users are locals. They said like sixty, sixty-plus percent, maybe seventy percent are local users, so it really seems to be um, meeting the goals that we established and the council is all on board. Some of the council members were really skeptical going in. Now they're all like, yeah, let's expand the program next year. So I imagine we're gonna put some more money into that to even beef it up for next year.
I think one other thing that's important to note is so far, there's been only one recorded accident. On it, and we don't know even though the severity of it, but by any mode standard, that would be, it's pretty remarkable to have that low, like that high of a safety rate for considering how many trips and miles you've already had on it, so.
Or tourists.
We don't, we don't even know who it was, but it was, it was um, basically someone who was on the bike and had a collision with someone else uh, somewhere on the rec path, but you know, in twelve thousand trips, they only have one recorded or documented accident is, is pretty remarkable because that was another concern I think that people had going in.
What month is that going till?
It's going till the end of October. Yep. You know, winter, there was talk about, there is a whole new series of issues with winter. I mean, those tires wouldn't work. Da-da-da-da-da, and how many people are actually gonna use it? I mean, there's a few people that are out there being hardy, but. So anyway, that's down the road at best. Yeah, but I think they'll probably get them out earlier next spring. You know, so they're gonna go to the end of October. I bet you they'll be out there as soon as April's done, something like that.
Anything else from commissioners? Alright. Well, that, the town of Breckinner's Plan Commission Meeting is adjourned.
Make a chair.
Thanks, Mike. Good to see you.
Of course. Take care.